I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order. I wonder if everyone could stand for the Pledge Allegiance and then for a moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Alderman McDade.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Black.
(laughing).
Alderman Fazini.
I'm here too.
Alderman Fruen.
Here.
Alderman Lauer.
Here.
Alderman Sage.
Here.
Alderman Wulamway.
Here.
Alderman Sterns.
Here.
Mayor Renner.
Here. Madam Clerk, I didn't, oh, excuse me, yes, I did, I didn't see the comment cards. Thank you. We have two people that are interested in addressing the council. Again, the time goal would be, or time limit would be, three minutes. The first would be Dan Donath, and if you would step forward. And again, would you please announce your address too, for the record?
Sure, yeah, it's Dan Donath, and it's 3713 Gina Drive here in Bloomington, Illinois.
I apologize for the mispronunciation.
It's all right, it's all right, you're not the first. Go ahead. Good evening, everyone. My name is Dan Donath, as you know, and I'd like to start out by saying thank you to the mayor and all the city council members, and the city manager and the finance director for discussing the public pension funding. When you discuss that, it opens up some interesting questions about, you know, how did we get to where we are today, and where do we go from here? And I'd especially like to thank the city manager and the finance director for planning for the future. You know, the interesting thing about the city of Bloomington is that it's an ongoing entity. It doesn't expire in five years, or 10 years, or 20 years, it just continually moves on. And so I think planning for that future on that basis is important. And speaking of that planning, I wanted to give you a brief history lesson in regards to how that planning occurred back in 1993. In 1993, the Illinois Municipal League, which represents the cities of the state of Illinois, encouraged legislation that would change the formula on how pensions were funded. Now, the state actuary and all the independent actuaries looked at this formula and they said, "We'll tell you how it's going to go. It's going to start out with low payments in the beginning, but in about 15 years, it's going to start ramping up, and it's going to get really, really expensive for the last 15 years." Well, the IPPFA, which represents police and fire pensions, they sued the state of Illinois. They said, "That's mismanagement." Well, it went to the court system, and the courts ultimately decided with the state and said, "Here's the bottom line: Cities have to pay those benefits no matter what. So if they want to pay a little bit in the beginning and pay a whole bunch at the end, so be it, that's their choice. It's not illegal, it may be irresponsible, but it's not illegal." And that's the path that was set on. Well, guess what? About 2008, we started to see the amount of contributions start to raise for police and fire pensions exactly as was told it was going to happen. Now, sometimes people will say, "Oh, well, it's a fault of the economy and the market crash." Well, that's not a fault of the market crash, because when actually a valuation occurs, they actually smooth it over five years, so it removes any of the unique ups and downs from a specific year. In addition to that, they, you know, in order to realize the loss, you have to sell your investments. We never sold our investments in the police pension fund. We maintained the ones we had, the prices went back up, and we never lost a thing. Our returns are great. So you have a decision tonight, when you have this pension funding policy, to decide if you want to be like 1993 city council, which affects actually your council today in 2013, and make that decision to follow their path, or do you want to follow a path that where the city council of 2033, what position are they going to be in when they sit here? Now, that's kind of a tricky question, because in 2033, they probably won't remember your names, but the decisions you make will affect your kids and your grandkids and the overall health, financial health of the city of Bloomington at that time. So, thank you for your time, and if anybody has any questions?
It's not used to the procedure.
Okay, that's fine. I just want to offer it up, just in case.
Appreciate it, thank you. Thanks. Alton Franklin. You know the drill, Al.
My name is Alton Franklin, I live at 508 Patterson Drive, Bloomington, Illinois. For the record, for both the consent and regular agenda, I have no personal interest, and I have not received and have received no promise of any financial benefit for any actions I might take. Having said that, a few things on my mind tonight. Haven't seen as much, but I saw one creep in, and I understand that we're going to get change orders from time to time, but one small recommendation I would make, for what it's worth, if we could put just, I think, a summary sentence saying, "It was the low bid, and we had to have this done, or it's an emergency repair, or this is the final payment," which if you read the literature, you do it, but if you can read through the agenda and just get a sense of it, it's not something that really takes that much time and could resolve a lot of confusion. The only other matter that I'd like to touch on is what Dan referred to as the pension funding. I'm hearing noises about five versus 10 years, and my concern is, anytime you stretch things out, you're going to pay more. And we have the means at hand, there's been some, I'm pleased to say, very measured and deliberate thought go into this, and discussions I've heard have really impressed me with how much people are really looking into it and seeing what is the best measure. I have to trust each person's conscience, but I would emphasize that the longer we stretch it out, the more we're going to pay for it. And one last note, I am really immeasurably proud that we finally started to move on this and actually get something in place and going. I don't think that it's been something that has really caused our first responders to falter in their duties, because they're exceptional at what they do, but I know it's had to have been in their mind, and I would like to see it at a point to where they've got the safety of the public and what needs to happen on their mind foremost, and not having to worry about other things like taking care of their family or what's going to happen down the road. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Al, appreciate it. And moving right along, we're going to the consent agenda. Are there any items that any of the aldermen or women would like to see removed from the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve? So moved by Alderman Fazini, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Alderman Black. Now, actually...
Just push start vote.
Start vote, okay. My apologies. In the last meeting, Alderwoman Schmidt was presiding over the first use of this electronic voting, so again, please bear with me, so...
So you just have to make sure...
Okay, I don't have votes in for everybody yet, would everybody please say aye or nay? Okay, and now show and display? Magically delicious, there we go. Okay, all right. And looks like the motion has carried, nine to zero. Madam Clerk, you're not, essentially, you'd read the dissenting votes, correct?
So yes, for the consent agenda, the motion would have passed unanimously.
Okay, all righty. Okay, okay, thank you. Again, thank you also to Alderwoman Schmidt, who's walking me through this.
Yeah, right, blind leading the blind.
Under item 8A, or under our regular agenda, there's an Economic Development Council, the Bloomington Normal Area Property Tax Abatement Incentive Program, and corresponding memo of understanding. And we have approximately 15 minutes designated for this, and we roughly, how long would the presentation be?
Just a few minutes.
Just a few minutes? So what if we could do that, and then I will ask who would like to speak to this? Okay? I'll turn it over to City Manager David Hales.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to ask Justine Robinson, our Economic Development Coordinator, to come forward. And before she speaks, let me just say that I think the council is very familiar with this limited discretionary property tax abatement of improvements, and the memorandum of understanding. We've had not only a presentation at the recent joint governing board meeting, but also in our Finance and Administrative Committee meeting, so we certainly are bringing this to you with a strong recommendation to city staff that this be approved tonight. Let me just turn to Justine for a few highlights of this particular MOU between the city, the EDC, and other governmental entities. Justine.
Thank you, City Manager Hales, and good evening, Mayor and City Council. What you have before you this evening in your packet include five items, as City Manager Hales referenced, a memorandum of understanding for all taxing bodies, the city and school district included among others, to be able to enter into, as well as a summary narrative from the EDC office, a letter of support from private institutions such as State Farm, Country Financial, McLean County Chamber of Commerce, and others, incentives comparison research performed over the course of a year by the EDC staff, and vetted by a committee through the EDC led and managed by City Manager Hales, as well as the EDC's five-year strategic plan. The request this evening before you from the EDC and recommended by staff is to execute the non-binding memorandum of understanding and supply the EDC with a framework of understanding for which they can enter into conversations with outside perspective as well as current businesses who meet certain thresholds for project investment and property investment and timeframes as predetermined and outlined in the memorandum of understanding. Just to confirm, again, this is a non-binding agreement, each property tax abatement agreement would be brought before the city council prior to confirming with the individual private party. So at that time, you will have authority to add private remarks, external stipulations outside of the memorandum of understanding, and you will be able to negotiate that at that time. This just again gives the EDC a framework to be able to respond timely to requests that are sent by the state of Illinois or other private parties and site selectors who are exploring opportunities in the Bloomington area. With that, the EDC staff, Ken Springer, and then of course myself are here if you have any questions regarding this document or the concept. Thank you.
I just wanted to say that just two weeks ago, we went to LA, and that basically that was Mayor Coos, myself, Ken, and Mike O'Grady, and the people that we met with that were site selectors or others, they basically had two messages. First of all, our companies want to know, "What do you, can offer, you know, millennials?" That's the main thing they want to know. "What can you offer millennials?" And frankly, if you don't have a vital downtown or a place they want to live, they're not interested in you, even if you've got a good location. The other thing they said is, "You need to be quick and decisive, and time is of the essence when you're trying to attract businesses." And if we're going to be low on the eight ball in the next generation of the new world economy if we aren't acting decisively with whatever kinds of economic incentives we have to bring to the table. So again, that was loud and clear, and that was actually part of my mayoral remarks, so I'm not actually, I'm taken out of our time, but not too much. So what I'd like to see is if we can, who would like to speak on this, and then I can divvy up our remaining 11 minutes or so between the council members? Actually, can we start out with a motion? That's a good idea. Is there a motion to approve?
I would make that motion to approve.
Moved by Alderman Fruen, is there a second?
A second.
A second by Alderwoman Schmidt. Okay, now, who would like to speak to this? Okay, one, two, four, okay. So Alderman Sterns, Maboka, so, Black, and Sage. Okay, I will ask each of you to be approximately a minute and a half to two minutes, and I believe we started with Alderwoman Sterns, Sage, Maboka, and then we'll go to my left.
Actually, my time, I'd like to spend with a couple of questions to the presenter. I understand we're going to have EDC to ask questions of, is that correct?
Correct.
So I don't have any comments. What I'm asking is, is help me understand that each one, each package presented to a prospective employer would come before us before it's actually presented to them, is that the case?
Well, you would be hearing each package for approval. The intent of this proposal is to create a framework, to give me as an economic developer a general sense that if I encounter a project that is of a certain size threshold, that that project will generally qualify for property tax abatement as an incentive tool. The intent is to get taxing bodies to agree to that framework to give me something that I can go and sit down and negotiate with a company, and then bring that project back to each taxing body for a vote each time.
Okay, okay, so each one is completely, is completely its own entity?
Correct. Each agreement would have to be voted on by this board and every other board of taxing bodies that participate.
And then my next question is regarding the transparency of the evaluation to determine whether or not criteria were met. Because obviously, there's a accountability part of this, where, for instance, whatever we would approve as a package, then you would be coming back in, I don't know, whatever the time period is, various time periods, to say, "Yes, they did employ X number of people," or "Yes, they did," you know, "meet whatever criteria there are." Is that, I mean, there is an accountability part of this.
We're suggesting that we do an annual audit as part of the MOU. As far as the details on what the city of Bloomington would like to see, that can actually be written into the individual agreement between the city of Bloomington and the future company, and you can write into that whatever you guys need to feel comfortable, and that's wholly up to the city of Bloomington and the city of Bloomington's legal staff as far as what to require. The key things that we're seeking tonight is to set that threshold, size threshold for projects that could receive property tax abatement, and then again, to set the length of term of that abatement. Those are the two big details that we want to have congruent across the different taxing bodies.
So you have the framework, but you don't have the specifics until we approve it, is that correct?
Specifics will go into the individual agreements.
Right, okay.
And just as Bloomington, you know, you guys are concerned about transparency, that might be something that goes very heavily into your agreement between companies, the county might have something else that they want to write in there. There could be some variance as far as what the requirements are, but as long as the broad outline of the program is the same, such as that each taxing body is going to offer the same length of term for the same size of project, that's what we're after.
Okay. And then my hope is that there would be transparency for our ability to look at the numbers and the audit, so to speak, the audit that you actually do.
Yep, and that's wholly up to the city of Bloomington administration and legal staff. Whatever you guys want to write into those agreements, that's your business, and will EDC will work to make sure we get you guys whatever you need.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Sage.
Just a couple of quick questions, because I'm trying to understand, or I guess, create clarification, right? So what we're trying to address here is, is if a business comes here, or we go somewhere to solicit that business here, everybody else around the table, everybody else that we're competing against, probably has a framework like this in place already. They're empowered at the beginning of the process to talk about abatement.
Correct.
Not after the fact.
Correct. One of the key things that Justine referenced, some research that the EDC had done about what other communities are able to put on the table, and one of our biggest weaknesses is that in those cases, in those very rare cases where we've actually put local incentives such as property tax abatement on the table, there's no defined program ahead of time. And so that means that each time we start to discuss this with a company, we have to literally start from scratch. And that can take, you know, three to four months to get those agreements negotiated, and part of that is, part of what we're trying to do with this proposal tonight is set that framework up ahead of time so we can move a lot faster. Obviously, we're still going to have to bring these projects back for approval, and that is going to take some time, but it'll take a lot less time if we have that framework set up ahead of time. And the other advantage too for the taxing bodies is there's a level of transparency built in, because the requirements for these incentives are going to be set in stone through this MOU. It's going to be very obvious which companies are going to have access to these incentives. It's not going to be a question of, "Well, why does this company get it, and why does this other company not get incentives?" That's the intent of this.
So, and again, just a final question slash comment, so out in where the rubber beats the road within economic development, without this, we're at a competitive disadvantage when it comes to attracting business to the Twin Cities or to McLean County, if you will.
Absolutely, and I'll be very blunt, that this is really going to be the very first local incentive tool that we have in our toolbox. I fully expect that the EDC will be coming forth with proposals for other incentives in the future, because this, you know, local property tax abatement program that we're proposing, that's a very, very small drop in the bucket of what is out there as far as economic development incentives. It's a good step forward for us, it's a first step for us, but this is not going to be the end-all, be-all incentive tool for economic development.
Thank you. Alderman Wulamway.
Okay, thank you. I do appreciate this, because I'm somebody who likes to be a little bit more aggressive in this area, and I think you've done a good job with it. And speaking of being aggressive, I think I'd like to see us be a little quicker and decisive with the approval process. Anytime a company comes here, and again, I think you remember me mentioning this about Wards Beverages, it took about a couple of months, and I'm not sure that they, one, they have the patience to go through all of that, it feels cumbersome, but in that couple of months as well, you know, the competition has a chance to react to what it is that we're doing. So is, are there, and this may not be a question for you, maybe for the different taxing bodies, but is there a plan to move up the approval process? I know we've had special meetings in the past, as opposed to waiting every two weeks, you know, two weeks, and another two weeks, and another two weeks. I can think of the township, for example, and the city of Bloomington, you know, reviewing the same thing, exactly the same thing, it's the same nine or 10 people here, but yet, they had to come back another two weeks later to address the issue.
Mm-hmm.
So is this something that we could address? I think it would give us somewhat of an advantage.
There's no formal plan to take this program and change the approval process of it. I do think in general, it's good and it's smart economic development policy to every couple of years at least sit down and evaluate what we have, and what our tools are, and whether or not they're working. You mentioned the two weeks, it's interesting you mention that, because very recently, we saw a major manufacturing RFP come through the state of Illinois, and in that RFP, you know, there's always a huge section on incentives where the company asks for, you know, the sun, moon, and the stars. But one of the things they asked for was specific letters of commitment within two weeks of us getting the RFP, which, would this program be able to do that? No, not as proposed, but it's going to be a lot quicker than us waiting three or four months, because frankly, companies, very few companies will actually wait three to four months to do incentives. It has to be a very special case where companies are that patient, so...
And just to make it clear, everybody we talked to made that loud and clear. Time is of the essence, speed, you know, you've got great advantages, because our stick was, "Hey, you know, if you want to be an hour, an hour and 15 minutes from Chicago, come down two hours, we're a lot cheaper. We got a strategic location." Yeah, they like all that, but you got to be able to move quickly, and you got to have something to offer millennials, you know? And that's what we heard from everybody.
Mm-hmm.
So, anyway, in the order, let's see, I believe Alderman Black and then Alderman Fazini.
Thank you. I don't know, do I qualify as a millennial? What is the... Millennials, I don't know about that.
Stop rubbing it in.
I don't know. Well, thank you guys for putting this together, I very much appreciate it, and we've had this discussion a number of times, and the Admin and Finance Committee, and I'm all about economic incentive packages, and, you know, at some point, you know, I always like to bring up discussions I had in the campaign trail, and I always get two questions, and the first is probably obvious taxes, but number two is, "What are you going to do to bring business to Bloomington?" And this is a key way that we can empower our Economic Development Council to do that. And I recall, you know, last year's budget cycle at the county board, we're talking about funding the EDC, and you know, "Can we get more from you guys?" And this is an example of more, and we appreciate that. And today, I see Todd out there, I went to the McLean County Chamber of Commerce luncheon, Economic Vision Luncheon, they were talking about how the government gets in the way and doesn't allow business to prosper, and it's hard to deny that in some cases. And I'm looking at page 237 in the packet, and it goes through the disadvantages of doing business in Illinois, and there are several bullet points, and there probably could be several dozen more to it. So we're kind of in an uphill battle, and so we need to do everything we can to attract businesses here, because as a millennial, I worry about the future of Bloomington. Yeah, I'm throwing it out there. You know, I look at my friends and my peers who, you know, get their degrees here at Westland, they go to ISU, they get their postgraduate degrees, and they leave. We are losing out on that key business. We are strategically placed here, we are on an information superhighway, we're between Chicago and Houston for that. We are poised to do well, so from my perspective, the local government should be doing everything they can to attract these types of businesses. We should be doing everything we can to tap into that talent pool, get them here, put the roots down, because that's our long-term strategy. These discussions about pensions and fixing our roads and all the other things that we're talking about will be moot if people decide to leave Bloomington. These discussions about pensions and and fixing our roads and all the other things that we're talking about will be moot if people decide to leave Bloomington because they can do better somewhere else. So creating business, driving businesses to come here, creating the opportunities is what we should be doing, and this has my full support.
Thank you, Alderman Fazini.
In the spirit of quick action, the Administration and Finance Committee, when it reviewed this at two different meetings, actually, helped form what you have come back to us with, but we left out a key ingredient. One of the statements in here is, in all cases, we will have a clawback provision. The two projects that we've approved, one of them had a clawback provision, and the other had very logical reasons for no clawback provision, and we passed both of them. If we're going to give you the ability to act quickly, if a clawback provision is in there and the company has a good reason for not doing it, you're going to be going contrary to your policy, our policy, and it's going to slow everything down. What we suggested from the Finance Committee when we said, let's go forward, is that instead of in the MOU, in all cases, change it to, in all cases unless logic to the contrary dictates waiving the clawback provision, unquote. And that'll give you more freedom and act quicker. I didn't, I waited to approve anything or actually recommend this, but I think we should amend the the motion to include that, to give you the chance to be able to act quickly. I will do what the rest of the council would like on that. If that clause is not in there and you have your hands tied, I will vote against this.
Okay, well, if that's a motion, you're going to need to make it because you're the last speaker. Are you are you trying to do a?
The motion has been made.
I know, but you don't, you're trying to.
I would like to amend the motion, but it'll take the person who made the motion and seconded it to agree, and if they do, we can we can do the amendment. I'd like to amend the motion as, in all, in all cases, unless logic to the contrary dictates waiving the clawback provision, replace in all cases.
Do you comment on that?
I do have one comment is that this MOU has already gone out to other governments, and so it would be, changing the language like this would throw our engine in the gears, and we'd have to go back and change the packets of the other governments. I I would mention, though, that again, this is this is a non-binding MOU, and two, we could we could insert that language in the individual agreements between the city of Bloomington and the companies. I I agree, I think it's a logical a logical choice of wording. Unfortunately, we've already got this thing out, and it's already, it's going to go for action for Unit Five tomorrow night, so changing the wording would would force us to go back to the.
Let me ask the the maker of the motion, was that Alderman Fruen? And then who was the second? And Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Fruen?
My quick gut reaction would be to leave the original motion as it is, approve it as you have it planned, let it get through the different organizations, and then look at an amendment at later time, would be my gut reaction.
Okay, all righty, then I think we're done, and, oh, actually, we don't have to, Madam Clerk, call the roll. I'm still waiting for a couple of people. There we go. Okay, looks like the motion is passed eight to one, Madam Clerk.
So the motion on eight A, passed by vote of eight to one, with the nay vote being Alderman Fazini.
Thank you very much. We move on to item eight B, proposed 2013 tax levy for the city and library, adoption of estimated levy. And the staff recommends that the proposed levy be adopted in the estimate of $23,219,066 for 2013 tax levy. For purposes of discussion, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the tax levy as presented to.
Oh, okay, moved by Alderwoman Schmidt, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Fruen. Who'd like to speak to this? Okay, I'll start with Alderman Sage, Sterns, Lauer, okay?
And and I'll be brief. Again, I think my comments were spelled out pretty clearly in my my questions to staff. Particularly, it's not the it's not the size of the amount, $33,000 is is not that. It's just, again, when especially when I see here in the staff response, the the budgeting of the last few years and and money that was unspent. It seems to me that if if we really want to be clear about how the taxpayer money is is being spent with the library, and that that we ought to say that that we we just ought to create some line of sight for for what happens with the leftover money, the unspent money from each budget year. And 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 it goes into, you know, back into the library fund as suggested here. When I look at at some of the the amounts here, particularly, and I recognize there's a notation for FY13, but but some of the other budget years, $33,000 could could clearly be covered out of some some reserve funds that the library has as opposed to acts, you know, asking the taxpayers to pick up. And again, it's a significant amount, I I'm not focused on the amount, it's more the principle of the thing and and the way that the the budget works for for the library, so thank you.
You would have preferred to vote on the library separately from the overall levy, or?
Well, and we and we did that last year, okay, we did that last year, and I think there was some concern from some of the aldermen that that happened. So so we, I see it went back to a combined vote again this year. Again, for $33,000, I I'm not interested in in, you know, necessarily some some type of, you know, parliamentary gymnastics here in the motion to approve and amend and do the other kind of stuff. I'm just highlighting that the practice that there's there's a lot of taxpayer money that that is not spent on the budgeted items that then goes back in for for other future expenses and so forth and that type of thing. I'm just suggesting that that $33,000 increase that they're asking for could be could be absorbed and paid for out of some of that previously unspent money. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Schmidt, and then Alderman Lauer. Excuse me, Schmidt, Alderman, Alderwoman Sterns.
Thank you. My my comment here, just really quickly, is that apparently the levy, we're keeping the levy at a level, the levy is level. And that could, can you comment, Patty, on whether or not this actually could? I know it's an estimated levy, a result in any lowering of property tax bills, or how this formula is going to play out in terms of property taxes?
Sure. Currently, because our, you know, in the tax formula, if you look at the first page of the memo, there's three pieces, the dollar levy, the EAV underneath, and that kind of shoots out the tax rate. Our EAV is up slightly, our preliminary EAV is up slightly. We don't know what will happen during the appeals process. But that $33,000 increase to the total levy for the library is still actually showing a slight, I'm estimating a slight decrease in taxes based on that. But net-net, I'd like to say it would remain flat, even though there's a $33,000 increase. I would think the net impact to the taxpayer, net of appeals, if I had to make an educated guess, would be a a flat tax compared to last year for our portion.
Okay, depending on how the appeals process goes and all that sort of thing. But still, I mean, it's encouraging to see that. I mean, it's encouraging, I I think that's a that's a good thing that maybe a lot of the taxpayers might not be aware of, is that, you know, there's certainly, we're looking at no increase, and there is even a small possibility of a decrease. Thank you for that, I just want to clarify. And regarding the library, my thought is that this won't really have an impact, and, I mean, the $33,000, and also the fact that the library has come in under budget. And yes, they've saved money, but I really think that is commendable. And I don't, I I would not want department heads or departments to feel like, if I don't spend all of my money, I'm going to, in any way, shape, or form, be penalized in the future for that. So on that general principle, you know, I I support the fact that the library has kind of underspent, you know? And so, yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, and and clearly that was, that staff put this together with the knowledge that the city council had little or no appetite for increases in property taxes. So, I mean, that was a clear staff directive, and there may be some other things that we explore, cost cutting, or maybe other fee increases, but it's not going to be property taxes. Alderman Lauer.
I appreciate that, Mayor, and I appreciate exactly what both previous aldermen discussed, and I support that. The point I'm going to make here is, in principle only, I I am very happy that that we're not increasing taxes overall here. But when we start to talk about a tax increase, and then we couple that to the pension, I am somewhat dismayed. I realize it's additional spending possibly, or something that we haven't done, an increase in 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 funding. But I think we need to really look at prioritization here. The media picks up on this, and basically, we end up blaming a tax increase on a pension funding increase. And I I don't agree that that's necessarily true. Really, I think we need a a top-to-bottom reprioritization, and I would think that this is very high priority rather than tie it directly to any increase in taxation, thank you.
Thank you, okay. At this point, Alderwoman Schmidt, excuse me.
Just a couple of points here. First of all, Alderman Lauer, I certainly do agree we need to do some prioritization, and thank you to Alderman Sage for reminding us, we've done that a couple of times in the past with a lot of citizen engagement to great benefit, and and I hope we'll do that again. It probably also bears repeating that the city portion of the property tax is all we're talking about, and there will probably be other taxing bodies who may be raising their taxes. So sometimes people get mad at us when their property tax bills go up, but, you know, we're doing our best here for our own budget. And I also want to make a comment about the library. I, you know, I I appreciate what Alderman Sage is saying about the $33,000, but I I think as I read the minutes of the library board meeting where they discussed the budget, it was a very conservative approach to their budget for next year, and in fact, I think the one descending vote was from trustee Emily Callahan, who was dismayed that the that the library board wasn't being more aggressive in raising taxes and preparing itself to continue on the building that it's doing of its, you know, of its programs and resources. And then, you know, having aside is just a professional comment that I know libraries are looking at six to seven percent cost of living increases, if you will, for all of our resources, for our collections and things. And and I and I'm sure that's very much in the mind of the Bloomington Public Library as they as they thought about what they needed to do, and thank you.
Okay, well, I think at this point, unless there's someone else who wants to speak, we're going to go ahead and vote on levy. Gosh, we love to see that, nine to zero, okay? Okay, the motion carries and no nays. Now, let's see if we have equal unanimity when we talk about pensions. We have the proposed funding ordinance for police and firefighter pension plans, and we have allocated 40 minutes for this. And we, you know, certainly had some discussion about this already many times, it's just obviously not something that's new to us. And we, obviously, there are discussions about prioritization, and pretty much all kinds of budgeting are prioritization. But at the end of the day, frankly, as as a political scientist and somebody who's been involved in in budgeting from the International City-City-County Management Association, pretty much, they do reflect priorities, but there's really no such thing as zero-based budgeting, where you really let it lay everything out on the table, and then you start from scratch. And to some degree, you're almost always at least looking at the base of last year. And unless there's something that's obvious to cut, and or obviously that you got to step up to the plate for. So as we're considering this, as many have said, I think Alderman Lauer said, and I would certainly agree, you know, it's it's not as if sewers or pensions exist in a vacuum, right? There are other things. But at this point, what we can pretty well say is if we ignored, you know, pensions, and we stayed at the the low level, or we ignored sewers and said, let's do, we'll fix them as a crisis, in the short run, we probably wouldn't have to make other kinds of cuts. We wouldn't have to even consider raising any kind of fees or taxes to pay for it. But I don't think that that's a very wise choice, and I think overall, we can probably agree, if we don't agree on the details, that we don't want to go down that path. So at this point, what I will do is turn this over to the city manager, and then when you're done, I will see who would like to speak and and address the policy. Mr. Hales.
Thank you, Mayor. What we brought before you is an ordinance to amend the city code, chapter 16, by actually codifying a pen, a police and firefighter pension funding policy. And as you, this is very similar to what you've seen in the past. There's, we've given some highlights of this, we've also attached, again, that if the ordinance is adopted as written, there is a five-year phase-in to kind of recapitalize or add additional funding necessary to kind of have a phase-in period to hopefully then get the annual contributions to a state that would be in accordance with the various criteria that's been mentioned here. I do want to point out that we've also, the Finance Director and her staff have also put together a much more comprehensive analysis of utility tax revenue. As you know, as we've talked about, how do we fund this four to $5 million plus or minus phase-in that will be required commensurate with this policy? And as indicated here, that if over time, either in one shot or over a phase-in, if we do go to the maximum statutory limits, which normal and and most cities have gone to, $4.5 million could be raised in additional revenue, and that would just be a little shy of what's necessary to actually afford through revenue enhancement, again, the phase-in period for this policy. Now, I do want to point out, because different aldermen have also brought up, well, what other revenue enhancements could be considered? We're still working on that, trying to look at others, there's been many mentioned by the city council, and that is still kind of a work in progress. But we did want to give you the benefit of one revenue enhancement that could almost cover the full phase-in of this policy for your consideration. So with that, both Patty Lynn Silva and myself would be happy to respond to any questions the council has on this proposed ordinance establishing.
Just to clarify, if we were to phase the utility tax in over those those several years, it would take us from two and a half, about two and a half percent, to about 5%, which is where normal in most cities are.
Of course.
And if that's earmarked or designated for pensions, then that would almost cover it, we'd probably need a few hundred thousand more in cuts.
Well, yeah, you'd have to balance kind of that additional amount that would be necessary, yes.
Okay.
Can I also just, let me, I just forgot, someone did suggest that there may be some interest in modifying and going with a 10-year phase-in. We did provide for you how, if there was an ammendatory motion made, that there is one year that would have to be changed. Instead of 2019, it would be 2024, and we also have a spreadsheet showing that 10-year phase-in as opposed to the five-year, which is recommended.
But then the more aggressive we are, though, upfront, the more money we save the city in the long run?
Yes.
Alderman Sage has has been trying to get the four for quite a while, and Alderman Fazini, and so who else would like to speak to this, Alderwoman?
Well, oh, wait a minute.
We may, we may want to have discussion before.
A procedural request, I guess I would, as again, as my my questions and comments have indicated, I'm 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 more inclined towards the 10-year phase-in period. I feel like I would benefit from from some conversation and and from the other aldermen in terms of you know, why they feel strongly that that we would do the five-year over the 10-year. You know, I recall that that last time I asked for this, I think we were talking about voting on the system here for the meeting management and such, and I, you know, I learned some valuable stuff that night and and actually changed my mind. But before we make a motion and then have to go through whatever we have to go through to possibly amend it, I think I would probably benefit from maybe just hearing some comments or conversation from other aldermen, in an abbreviated.
Right, especially since, I mean, we we still have, even just in terms of budgeted time, but this is, this is so important, I think, if we went over a little bit, that's okay. So maybe midway through, I'll ask if there's, there seems to be some sort of consensus, but we'll do that, let's see, from, let me move to Alderman Fazini, Sterns, Black, Fruen. Okay, in that order, Alderman Fazini.
I just wanted to make a motion, if they don't want a motion, I'll pass.
I just wanted to make a motion, and if they don't want a motion, I'll pass.
All right, pass for now. Then back to Alderman Sterns.
If he's making a motion, doesn't he need a second? I mean...
No, he's not making a motion.
Oh, we're just having...
Where are we coming from now, if we think we should be more aggressive? I think Alderman Sage is asking, for those of you who might want to be more aggressive, the five years, what are the advantages of going five years? Before we get, have a little bit of discussion, in other words, before we actually make a motion, so we don't have to go through parliamentary gymnastics if a consensus seems to be going in another direction?
Well, the five-year, clearly, as far as I'm concerned, and correct me if I'm wrong, I'm waiting for Patty Lynn to come up so we can ask her a few questions. Because mine is more involving questions and comments. But it's clear that the five-year phase-in is certainly more equitable to future generations, unless I'm wrong. I mean, we're contributing more now and maybe a little bit less down the road. And we're also saving money by a quicker, by contributing more earlier. Correct, in general, is that the general?
The five-year plan does provide more savings. It provides about $69 million in savings as opposed to the 10-year, which is $65 million in savings.
And also, the payments don't jump quite as, you know, I mean, they don't jump quite as much in the five-year because we're already paying in as they do jump in the 10-year. I mean, they really jump up there.
They would actually be a little bit, in year one, they're the same because of the state minimum has gone up. However, in the out-years, you're looking in the 10-year plan at about, on average, $1 million a year, whereas the five-year plan is about, on average, $1.5 million a year.
Right, so there's not a huge difference.
Not a huge difference, but it accumulates at about, you know, there's a half-million-dollar difference a year on average.
Okay, and I wanted to ask you, so looking at the tables, the five-year versus the 10-year, I just want to make sure that I'm looking at this correctly. The actual payment made is under fire and under police. Is that correct? Are those the actual payment or projected payments?
The projected payments to be made are under fire and police and then under the total column. So the second-to-last column on the right would be the total pension cost as projected for that year.
Right, okay, okay, so that's total for both. And one thing I wanted, okay, and so we're looking in, say, the year 2036 at 11 million. 11.1 million for fire and 20.5 for, yeah.
20.5 would be the total contribution for police and fire.
Right, 20.5 is the total. So we're looking at 20 million, 20 and a half million in 2036. And I just want to be clear about that. I'm really, really concerned about equity to future generations. I mean, that's one of my concerns, because these look like just enormous numbers coming up for the next generation of taxpayers, that, you know, they had nothing to do with, really, with, yeah, with creating this scenario. But they're gonna have to, they're gonna have to pay for it. I mean, here it is, and the numbers are just, to me, astronomical. The other question I have, but that's just a comment. The other question I have, we're not looking at the other pension funds here, the other post-employment benefits. We're not looking at the funding levels there, or the liability, or how we're going to address that, nor are we looking at IMRF.
Correct. The IMRF plan is much better funded, as we discovered. It's about 82% funded, and we have about 1,000 members. So we feel that that pension is in good stead right now. So we concentrated our efforts on police and fire, which were about 50% to 60% funded. In addition, there was a statutory requirement to have it 90% funded by 2040, which is causing that ramp up. By the way, I should mention that Dan Donath is the president of the police pension board, for those of you who are new, and he came out strongly. And I've heard also from the fire pension board, and of course, the union members are all very much in support of having their pensions funded, I should mention. But the police and fire, that legislation that he talked about, that 90% plan, that same year, that 2036 that you're talking about, if we stayed with the state minimum, that 20.5 million would be 24.7 million. So our phase-in and our new assumptions will contribute more to the plan earlier. And those contributions, although they sound staggering, you know, they will be much less than they would be if we stuck with the state minimum.
Well, there's no question about that. I mean, that's clear as day to me. And furthermore, I mean, when we're comparing this with the statutory, you know, minimum, I mean, to me, that's unthinkable, almost. So this is definitely a big improvement. Is it enough? I still have a question about that. What was your response about the other post-employment benefits? Because I know that's an actuarial, you know, necessity now that we report that.
It is almost a non-cash number. What happens is we are required by state law to provide retirees the opportunity to purchase health benefits at our premium. So we don't pay the health benefits. They pay their premium in full. But because it's at a group negotiated rate for a big group of people, plus it's for a much younger demographic, they are benefiting from kind of a lower premium, but the state requires that we do this. But then, when we actually pay out a retiree claim, those claims really don't correlate to the premium they're paying. And that causes what's called an implicit rate subsidy or an actuarial liability that basically says, the claims you pay, in no way correlate to the premium these retirees are paying. But because it's an unfunded mandate by the state, we have no way out of it. We're required to do so. But we decided to go with the pensions first, which is certainly a much bigger liability. The OPEB is only $18 million, and we pay all the claims for all the retirees that are made each year because we're self-insured. So we are paying those benefits. But there is kind of a disconnect between their premium and the actual claims paid, actuarially speaking. So we do have this kind of non-cash liability on the books. I do believe we should go forward with addressing that in the future. It wasn't the highest priority in terms of financial critical issues in my mind. So we focused on the pension. I believe the council did give that action through the action plan to focus on the pension. So we put our energy there and came up with a plan for that. But we are very happy to move next to the OPEB.
And in the order that I had, let's see, Alderman Black and then Frueen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I wanted to address Alderman Sage's question. So I'm not opposed to a 10-year plan. I just think that the five-year is, number one, more aggressive because it really doesn't push a lot of that burden down the road. It's not as awful as not doing anything, but it's, I'd like to see it be more aggressive. And that five-year period, it would allow us to see the budget. I know that there's a lot of uncertainties, but that's a little easier to foresee than a 10-year period of time and the uncertainties that are there. That being said, if the council feels that 10-year is the better option, you're not gonna see me voting against it. At least having a plan in place is a lot better than nothing.
Alderman Frueen.
I think this is one of those moments that, you know, we're focusing on pensions now. We don't know what else we have coming as far as the next month or two on other budget priorities. So that's why I'm a little bit reserved, and I don't know what I don't know. So I'm kind of leaning toward the 10-year option.
Others who may, Alderman Fazini.
Yeah, I would like to limit the discussion to the five or 10-year and then get to a motion. I would favor the five-year at this point.
Alderman Lauer hasn't spoken yet, and then Alderman Sage.
I also favor the five-year, but I don't think it's aggressive enough. I think that we probably need to look at the same thing that Alderman Sterns was looking at in terms of 20 years down the road, what is gonna happen to the schedule. I don't think that that's really acceptable. And so, at a bare minimum, probably the five-year schedule. If not, some adjustment. Thank you.
Okay, Alderman Sage.
Thank you, Mayor. So again, my concern is, is the $4 million savings, I get that. But that's spread over a total of 30 years. So at some point, it doesn't seem quite to be the overwhelming number that it might be on the surface. My concern is, again, as Alderman Frueen has suggested, and we've talked here in recent meetings about the overall budget demands that we're gonna have next year going into that process. And I look at that we're still getting, we're still getting funded where we need to be over 10 years. But certainly in these next five or six years, if we would adopt the 10-year phase-in plan, we have $500,000, you know, approximately, in most of those budget years, that we can use on other prioritized items. That's the gist of my discomfort, that the 10-year plan, at least I believe, offers us a little bit more flexibility and a little bit more latitude over the next four or five budget years as opposed to the five-year plan. And that's, again, that's, like I said, the gist of my discomfort.
Thank you. And I believe Alderman Lawmbway, you wanted to...
I was just gonna say, I mean, this is something we talked about during the campaign as well. And we said that we would do it. So I'm all for it, you know, five years, let's do it and then, you know, move past it. You know, I don't want to delay that any further.
Was that a motion?
Is that a motion?
We're roughly midway in our discussion, maybe a little further than midway. You didn't want to make a motion?
Let me make a motion, and let's go ahead and let's...
For five years to accept the staff recommendation?
Yeah, accept the staff recommendation for five years.
A second, second by Fazini. Alderman, Alderwoman Sterns, excuse me.
Just one other, one other question, one aspect of this that hasn't been discussed at all is the statement in here about the road resurfacing. If the city cannot absorb the 1.6 in road resurfacing in the 2015 budget not included in the levy, then this program may need to be reduced. I'm really confused about how we're tying funding into road resurfacing.
I think that was, as I understand, just one staff recommendation. I think that was just one place in the budget that it could come from.
And are we looking at, I haven't heard any talk at all of any kind of budget cuts in terms of, you know, we're talking about utility taxes, we're talking about motor fuel, we're talking about taxes. But what about, what are we discussing as far as budget cuts to fund, to help us make up the shortfall?
I don't know that there was anything specific. When I was talking, my question to a city manager, Hales, earlier, suggested if we instituted a very, very gradual phase, it'd be less than a bag of Doritos a month over five years or four years, we still wouldn't quite be there. We'd still need a few hundred thousand dollars in cuts, right? Even if we, we're not voting on paying that tonight. But if we adopted the five-year schedule and we went from where we are now over several years to adopt the rate that normal in other municipalities are on that utility tax, that would almost cover the pensions, we would need another couple hundred, a few hundred thousand dollars in additional cuts, which weren't specified, but that's one approach. That would have some cuts along with the utility tax gradually phased in. So the specific cuts aren't there. I did sort of rhetorically mention, I didn't, was not really serious about this, of course. I said on WJBC several weeks ago, I said, "Well, you know, even if we eliminated the zoo," and I don't think that would be a good thing, 100 and some years we've had a zoo, "but if we just eliminated the zoo, that's a million bucks." We need 350% more than that, even if we shut down the zoo tomorrow. Just to kind of stressing that we are always looking for budget cuts, right? And I can tell you, the staff is doing that constantly and looking at ways. And many aldermen and women have given ideas. Some of them have been really successful. But when we're making budget cuts and we've already shed, actually, the figure 71 positions, you know, a few years ago, we're not overstaffed. And if you're not cutting staff, it's really hard to cut your way to get many, many millions of dollars more. Again, that doesn't mean we can't do it. We can't do some of it. Because what I hear often from people is, "We have unacceptable response times to northeast part of Bloomington. We need a few more firefighters, or we don't have enough police officers. Do we want to lay off public service workers?" No. Well, if we just do those three big departments already, we're down to a smaller number. And again, it doesn't mean we don't have, we have to have some, I think, balance of some cuts, surgical cuts. But my opinion is, at some point, if we're gonna have an aggressive plan, there's gonna have to be some sort, even if it's a very, even if it's a bag of Doritos a month, kind of increase in revenues. But again, that was not a specified amount, or not specifically where it would come from, when I said we might need another 300,000 in cuts. But if you have some, I'm sure anybody would be willing to hear...
Well, you know, in an operation size of the city of Bloomington, there are always, there are always, always ways to economize and save, if there's the will to do that. And I just want to be very clear that if I support the five-year, or I'm sorry, yes, the five-year phase-in, and I absolutely will not support the 10-year phase-in, if I support that, it will definitely not be at the expense of road resurfacing, nor will it be at the expense of infrastructure or public safety. But I'm a believer, if, where there's a will, there's a way. And I am absolutely sure that there are many, many ways to cut expenses. And just to close, I'm still waiting for my list of employees down through the years. You know, we're just a very, very complex and large organization, and I need numbers, which I haven't been able to get, on the exact number of employees. I got a very long-winded explanation here about doing that. I don't want to cause anyone any work. But I've seen lists before, there are lots of lists out there, and I need a list for the past five years of the employees we actually do have in the city. I know we've added 30 interns, we've, you know, we've added a lot of administrative people, what have you. And I just want to see it on paper, and that's all I have to say.
In fact, actually, Alderman Sterns and I had kind of played a little telephone tag today. But I did get some information from Human Resources today. The figure was 621 employees, and I believe it was '08, '09, and then '09, 2010, it went down to 550. It would be more than that today because we have added some positions, but we've added nowhere near the 71 that were shed in that year.
Until you get the breakdown of it on paper, you really, you really can't, you really can't generalize. And I keep hearing generalities, but I'd like to see the specifics on paper.
No, I think that would be something that'd be nice for us to get. And I'll, you know, if we can talk to the city manager and Emily Bell. She may have sent it to me in email. I haven't had a chance to look at emails since 7:30 this morning. So it could be there, the full account. But when I get it, I'll give it to you. We'll, I think the council, it's a very good piece of information for the council and the public to have, absolutely. Let's see. Alderman...
Mayor, can I?
Oh, yes, please.
I just want to weigh in. I do think that, again, as staff is lean and we're stretched, it is kind of a complex answer to provide. However, I've also heard the majority of the council say prioritization is where you want to spend your time and effort. Irregardless of what something was budgeted and how many people we had, you know, three, five, eight, 10 years ago, when you start to prioritize services, that's looking forward. And that is something where you today is saying, "This is how much, how valuable this particular program or service is. Are we getting the results we want? If not, start, you know, require these programs and services to do that." That, to me, is what I'm hearing, is really where the majority of the council wants to spend time and attention. And it will take time and attention, because it's not just saying, "Public safety is important, but are we getting the results that you have in the way of expectations?" I have seen some cities take sometimes several years going through a programmatic prioritization effort. It's not something that's simple, and I think Alderman Sage has put together some excellent literature which talks about this prioritization. But the fact of the matter is, our records are just not all that specific in detail to separate out authorized budget jobs versus actual in, you know, working bodies, things like that. And frankly, as the response we put in the answers tonight, if the majority of the council really wants us to spend what could be considerable time and effort on that, we'll do our best, but it's not a simple endeavor or answer to be given. So I just wanted to share that with the council.
Thank you very much. And we have Alderman Black and Alderman Lauer, and then I think we're gonna be voting. Alderman Black.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it. So a couple of things I wanted to address. You know, I talked earlier about the two things people would ask about in the campaign trail, taxes, and then business development. Pensions was third on that list. And what are you gonna do about pensions? And this is one of the, this is the culmination of a lot of work. And I know that's been ongoing for, how long, David, well over a year at this point?
Yes.
Yes, so I haven't part all of it, you know. Yeah, so I've only been around for at least six of it. And these discussions have always led to, we want to move forward from the past. In the past, we, there wasn't the best approach when it came to these sorts of things, and it left current council almost shanghaied in some respects as to how we could deal with our problems. And I don't want to put us in a position where we are putting the burden on future generations. That just, that does not sit well with me, and that's one of the reasons I like the approach that we're taking with this. From a HR standpoint, I can sympathize with the idea that it's very challenging to identify specific numbers. Because when I hear, you know, 550 versus, is that FTE, is that number of people? I mean, that's baffling. There's a lot of questions that can be turfed out. But also from that realm, I think there are a lot of ways that we can save money. I'm absolutely open to all of them. And one of the ways I'd like to see us do better at is reaching out to employees for suggestions. I know we do some of that. But the stat that I usually cite is that the average company pays about seven grand for each employee enacted suggestion. So that's easy, you know, we can make little trims here and there. And, you know, big cuts, I think that's not gonna be possible, especially with the level of service our citizens are looking for us to provide. I get a lot of emails of people asking us to increase the level of service we provide while decreasing taxes. And that's something that is a little bit challenging to do. And I think we can do better with creating new ways to save money. And I know that we, David and I, we've talked about some of the ways that some administrative staff can do more stuff and, you know, kind of sorting that out and parsing it out. And I think we need to continue to do that. So I don't think anybody... So I don't think anybody in the council is adverse to finding new ways to save money. But I think cuts are coming and they're in order, but we'll have to see what specifics we can come up with without hitting that level of service that our citizens are looking for us to provide.
Okay. Last but not least, Alderman Lauer.
I certainly agree. And just want to add that I think we would be remiss anytime we talk about raising any taxes, that we have to be very mindful of the fact that the private sector is already at a very, very lean position, and we're asking them for more money. And in certain sectors, they're dealing with a negative entity at times. So I think that that has to be at the forefront of every discussion anytime we think about raising any kind, even if it's a bag of Doritos.
Okay. Thank you. Fair enough. Okay. Let's see. I'm going to start voting. A yes vote is in favor of the motion that was a staff recommendation of an aggressive, more aggressive than the 10-year, five-year plan. So yes, I would be for five years. Nay, would be you didn't want five years. Okay. Okay. At the end of the day, we have 9-0. Okay. Thank you. Now, moving to Mayor's discussion, I did talk a little bit about my trip with Chris Coos and two members of the Economic Development Council to Los Angeles, why I wasn't here last time. And I think we made some lot of good contacts. The, again, the things that, the two things we took away were, we need you to act quickly if we've got people who are going to potentially locate to your community, and what have you got for millennials? And of course, one of the things that we had, I think, as Scott, or Alderman Black mentioned a little while ago, is that we have two places, Illinois State, Illinois Western, where we've got the millennials here. What can we do perhaps to help keep them here? So in a sense, we are attractive because we have perhaps a supply of them. What are the things that we might be able to do to keep them here? And so those are definitely the things we heard. I do want to absolutely thank Alderwoman Schmidt for not only going through several meetings and braving, blazing the trail of this new electronic system, and for tutoring me this evening to make sure that I don't make a mistake. I can't promise that next time I won't still need your help on this. I also want to thank Alderman Dave Sage for the information that he sent from the International City Management Association and others. It's really important to have good information as we are trying to make decisions and understanding what, where we are in a comparative perspective is really, really important. And with that, I'll turn it over to our, oh, excuse me, the Alderman. Excuse me. Alderman Frueen.
Mayor, just one comment. I've been a longstanding opponent of the utility tax. I'm appreciative of the information that's been given to us tonight. If my recollection is correct, I'm going to guess, three years ago, we had some active discussion about the utility tax. I think the Finance Department gave us some more additional information, some comparisons to other communities beyond normal. And I think I've asked staff of some questions that helps me better educate myself and try to open myself up a little bit more to my block here that I'm not a fan of increasing the tax. And specifically, I think what would be helpful to us, if we had some illustrations to tell us, under these scenarios, what kind of increase would be, what would look like for the dry cleaner, the restaurant, the larger employer, the homeowner, and pick out some different people that make sense to illustrate to us what is that additional tax going to be for that person? And this is no different than what we do on garbage and water and everything else. So if we're going to increase my utility tax, I want to know what it's going to be before I would even entertain that thing. So I think my questions are with staff, and if they're not, then we need to talk more of it. I need more information.
Just as a clarification, when you're doing a garbage tax, people are sort of stuck into it. So I'm sure they can get that data, but it would be variable depending on your usage. And if you decided, "Hey, I'm not going to have showtime," right, in your cable, then you'll save a couple pennies as well. People have a little more control over that. They don't have total control, but they have more control over it. And of course, the one thing that is really important anytime you're considering any kind of taxes, are you in a competitive disadvantage? And given the fact that we, it's the one thing that we are lower than normal on, we wouldn't be at a competitive disadvantage with normal or other, you know, adjacent communities. But thank you.
Very good point. Mayor, real quickly, a very good point. And one of the other things I've asked about, are there certain organizations that are exempt from utility tax? Or is every organization, public, private, government, institutional, educational, et cetera, are we all paying utility taxes? Are there some that are exempt?
Okay. I'm sure we'll get those answers. Thank you. Alderman Fazini.
I'm just curious as to where we are in the search for an executive director at the EDC. It seems to me it's been quite a long time since we haven't had a permanent one.
Actually, Alderwoman McDate can answer this for us.
Sure, I'm happy to do that. We actually have a candidate coming into town this week. He arrives tomorrow evening with his family, and he'll be here as well on Thursday. And then we have another candidate coming in, I believe, just before the Thanksgiving holiday, that will also be spending a couple of days, or just about a full day, in the community. I know that there are numerous interviews and meetings and tours and things like that being coordinated for these. And I'm just very excited to welcome some new faces to the community and so on. So, you know, I think it's, you know, just a quick update for anybody that's wondering about it is, you know, we have been actively searching for a CEO, a leader for the organization since February. It's been something that's been widely discussed with the board members and the investors. And in the first round of interviews, there was just not a consensus on the selection. And so it was just thought we would continue the process until we could find that. So, you know, we're very hopeful and, like I said, excited to be inviting some new faces to Bloomington, Normal, and McLean County.
Thank you. Actually, I was looking at my schedule. I am supposed to meet with them. So anyway, Alderman Black.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up on the transparency ordinance. We'd kind of talked about that a few months ago, and we haven't talked about it in a while. Are we anywhere with that? What's the status?
Oh, let's see. A good question. That's one of the things that I have not worked on much over the last couple of months. It was brought up at our, by, I know, he's not here tonight. I don't know where he is. Bruce Meeks talked about it at our open house on Friday. And part of it is, and he raises a good point, he thought that this is something we should just go ahead with this piece rather than necessarily having a comprehensive one. I kind of wanted to have, and I, before we brought something to the council, something that was a little more comprehensive so that we weren't going to come back in another three months or six months and continue to amend it. At this point, we're certainly moving ahead with transparency and putting things out on the internet, and so we're making some, you know, definitely progress there. I haven't actually had a chance to sit down and chat with David and staff in more detail about some of the ideas and things that I had. So it is on the horizon. It's just not going to happen anytime soon, by next couple of meetings, maybe the end of the year, maybe the report of next year. David.
Let me just mention that we were going to send out a press release too, but recently the Illinois Policy Institute kind of updated the ratings on how cities are doing. And as far as their website, you know, and the criteria they're looking at, being open and transparent, we got a 26% increase in our overall rating. I think we went from the 50s to just a little below 80. So we made a big jump. Not only did we have IT help, Katie Bidos of my office and others. So we're continuing to work on trying to improve that particular rating, and we'll continue. I would point out that I think this is one of those items that in future committees of the whole, we don't have necessarily the ordinance on the policy action. And I think that would be, you know, I think the whole issue of open and transparent government was kind of that nebulous that it, until you start getting specific, it's kind of tough for staff. But what we did commit to is at least keep working on trying to get our rating much higher. So a great first big step to get that up just below 80, and we'll continue to get into the 90s and closer to 100%, because I think we can do equally as well as some of the other cities with or without an ordinance.
Thank you. And let's see, Alderman Frueen.
Mayor, did we decide yet on whether we're meeting next Monday night? Is that still pending?
No. It was canceled. Right, David, is that correct?
I didn't get that, but okay.
And I, and I...
I haven't, as I say, I haven't been...
Our office will send out another email just to kind of confirm that.
Okay.
We did send out preliminary indications saying unless council had any opposition, we would be canceling the committee of the whole for November and December.
Alderman Lauer.
Just a couple observations. We've had a lot of discussion about taxation increase. We've had a long discussion and very informative, and a lot of effort put into our EDC. It's been brought to my attention by one of my constituents that we had a sitting president some many years ago, probably before my birth, that talked about the paradoxal truth, the tax rates are too high and tax revenues are too low. And the soundest way to raise revenues in the long run is to cut rates now. And so I think that's something that we should really try to endeavor to preserve as our lower tax rate than many of the other municipalities in the region and in the state. We've got a really, you know, a gem here in central Illinois. We need to preserve that. And one of the ways to do that is to try to keep our tax rates as absolutely low as we possibly can and remain lean. The private sector right now is very lean, and we have to mirror that because that's who we answer to, and that's who's going to pay the bills here. Until we are able to generate or create an environment where they can prosper, we really don't have a right to prosper. And that's just the bottom line here. The IPI was mentioned earlier, Illinois Policy Institute, also for the good of Illinois with Adam Angieski, a friend of mine. Both have ratings on a number of other areas in local governance. And I think we should endeavor to try to get a good rating or a better rating from both of those entities in many of our areas. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alderwoman Sterns.
Thank you. One comment on the budget, because we, I couldn't talk anymore. I talked enough, not the budget, I'm sorry, the pensions, I talked enough, is that this policy doesn't seem to address the question of how to decrease the overall liability going forward. Is it possible other cities are looking at it, other cities are doing it? I do understand completely what the role the state of Illinois is in this, and the state of Illinois plays a huge role. Lobbying, our legislators, you know, that is a monumental task. But the city, by the way it structures its employees, by the way it structures a lot of things, can actually look at lowering its pension, its total pension liability going forward. And if we don't, I think putting 11 and 12 million dollars on future councils to contribute is not, is not really fair. And part of that is looking at the number of employees going on IMRF pensions, maybe a small thing, but it's still something that, in my opinion, we should be, we should be carefully looking at. Are we contracting, for instance, for the kinds of services that can be contracted for? Or are we hiring individuals and putting them on pensions, however small? So I'm looking forward to those employee numbers. And the other thing I wanted to mention tonight is that it's Veterans Day. And I wanted to thank all the veterans, anyone who's here, all veterans everywhere, for the incredible sacrifice and the, what they have, what they have paid to make our country free and what they have sacrificed. And I believe we have one veteran here tonight, and I want to thank him and all of the other veterans, maybe, I don't think we have any more, and all of the veterans. There was a wonderful ceremony in downtown Bloomington. I know Mayor Renner was there. And finally, the Vietnam-Korea Memorial at Miller Park has dramatically and drastically changed. The names are beautifully highlighted. And once again, we can read the names of those veterans who sacrificed everything